Okay, well, now convene the regular meeting of the East Line Board of Selectmen for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's roughly seven-ten. We're a little bit late because our finance meeting got off at seven, so we took a quick break. We've already done the pledge of allegiance. There are no additional agenda consent calendar items. Delegations, I don't see, there's a couple of department heads here, but they'll be speaking coming up. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the February first meeting.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of February first, two thousand and twenty-three, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carry unanimously. Before I take a thing for the consent agenda, I want to clarify, see if this meets with everybody, what Chris explained here. The first one is basically because of the fact it was one of those tax sales last year, and then the person, taxes get paid, but then the person comes back and basically pays his own taxes in that period where he can keep his own house. So that's why that's there. And the ones with Guilford Savings Banks, that's one of those ones where the person holding the, they were paid with escrow funds and then the person paid. So anyway, so if this meets with everyone else, I'll tell Chris to keep it along these lines moving forward. Okay, see, and then I'll take a motion for the consent.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Oh, second.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyway, Sandy, thank you. You had a bit of help in getting this form put together too, so thank you. Moving on, and this will just be for discussion tonight regarding the, I'll make sure, because I jumped around last time. Possibly to the EV charging stations. So won't be any action tonight. The thing is, the only real change is, we would have had to put up the full amount of the funding for the, right up front, which would have been over, you know, close to a hundred thousand dollars. And then we'd eventually get the rebate, which are pretty quick. And then we'd be made whole, except for the roughly fourteen thousand plus we'd have to pay out of pocket. Alex has worked with the company, and he, they are willing to front the money so that when the rebate comes in, they'll get the money back. So we won't have to obligate the funds up front, which, you know, we would have gotten it back, but we still have to obligate the money. There is a letter in here too from, or it might not be, I don't think it's, I thought it might be in here, from Bill. We do have a letter from Bill Mahal saying he's good with this. I do have it, but since this isn't action item, that's why it's not in here. And oh, there it is. Okay, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. But we got that from Bill. Also, Alex has talked to several towns, the ones that do have them, in an accessible location, they're used constantly. One town, I can't remember if it was Clinton or someplace like that, it was in the town hall parking lot in the back. It never got used because it was just not accessible to the public. The ones in Clinton and Guilford, and he has other ones too, but I know those are fact, are used on a very regular basis. He's done a really good job on that. And one of them used to be free, now it's for pay. You have to pay for it, and people complained a little bit, but they're still using it, so they do get a lot of usage. But he'll be here at the next meeting for, to just, you know, for a full presentation, and we'll take action at that meeting. By us not acting tonight doesn't make any difference because finance wasn't going to meet between now and our next meeting anyway, so. But anyway, everything's there, so I just wanted to bring everyone up to date on that. Fishing dock leases, Dan, did you want to talk to that a little bit, or?
Well, Anne did most of the heavy lifting here on this with her notes, and so, but if you, I mean, you prepared this all.
Well, you know, I just, in going over the leases, and I know, Kevin, you had sent, you had sent around the most current lease.
The current leases.
But we actually, but they hadn't changed really from what the board had approved back in December.
No, the only difference was the increase, the five percent increase in lease fees.
So what I did on this, this sheet, just knowing that we were going to just be speaking about it this evening, just, I listed some discussion points. So as you all know, the, these, the two leases are, that we're, that we're referring to are one-year leases, and the question is, you know, should they eventually be changed to two years? And I haven't had any direct conversation with the lessees, Mr. Lizza, et cetera. So that, that's one, one issue. Rent is the other. Last year, we increased by five percent. Not sure what was done in the previous years. And Kevin, you probably can speak to that, and Roseanne, and Dan, and what we should charge going forward. And again, what's the expectation of the lessees? Have they, have they stated anything or their, their preferences? And then in the, looking at paragraph twelve in both of the leases, insurance limits, and they seem, they seem high, you know, I mean, high meaning reasonably high, but just don't know if, if it's time to review those. When's the last time those insurance limits were considered, you know, were they, are they adequate right now? And then other issues, you know, is parking adequate for these, for these gentlemen? Because it's, it gets quite busy down at Cheney Park and not, you know, and we don't really guarantee a space. You know, I'm just, you know, just thinking of some, some other items that may have come up. And, and then just the, the documents are easy to, to change in term of, in terms of dates. There's nothing great to do there. That's easy enough. But, so, so these are the, these are the essentials, I think. And I, I don't know if, if Dan and Bill had any other thoughts.
I looked at it, I looked at it back when, for a second meeting, when we first got this assigned, and there was some, something in there about not being able to store anything in the area. And there's lots of lobster pots and stuff down there. And I don't know that that's a bad thing. I'm just saying the lease should allow that if it's.
Yeah, so, I don't want to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
So, in thinking back to the last time I reviewed the leases, there was a concern that there were a number of lobster pots, that were blocking parking, and it was a few, too many lobster pots. So, you know, it's one thing to have some intermittent storage, and, you know, as you're loading, unloading the boat, but became sort of a long-term storage area for these lobster pots, and, you know, parking is a premium down there, that space. So we wanted to control that. So that's why that language was put into.
Mr. Stevsky, I, I think would like to talk about that too. So I think reaching out to him, yeah, because I spoke with him, and he said he'd like to talk about that, you know, ways to open up that area, because he said that would help, you know, I, he didn't say this, but I, I think the intent was, it would open up a lot of area down there for parking and so forth.
So it was a concern.
I think if, if we can just identify the location, that stuff can be stored, you know, in that corner where it is, where nobody can park.
But where, yeah, where, where it doesn't impact the parking and access to the.
Yeah, I mean, and, yeah.
I thought we did in that previous lease give them an area, and limited them that bad area.
I thought we did.
Well, and the thing is, the, the thing is, I want to verify that, that is his stuff that has been left there. That, I don't know if that possibly might be not his, so I think we need to.
We need to find out.
And I think that's why reaching out to him would be the right thing to do, because I think he's very interested in making that space as open as possible, because it would enhance his business, parking ability, as well as Mr. Lizza and the Blackhawk as well. But.
Didn't we have some spaces reserved for them?
No, the, the lease has specified that they have so many parking spots for, and that. And, you know, there are times that they do exceed that, and, you know, I think that's one of the things Anne pointed out, need to address. So, you know, I think possibly moving, you know, we're really close to their season starting. So I think, you know, we could probably put on for an action item for the next meeting is to discuss, and that's, you know, to put down to approved, you know, just that one year, and then, you know, meet, meet with town attorney, talk about ways to address some Anne's concerns in the leases, and then in the fall, being able to do a buy, like a two-year lease, so they know, you know, they're not in the same spot next year, you know, sometime in October, maybe coming back and for action to, for the following year. But I think this year, you know, maybe if anyone's okay with this, coming back and just extending their lease, and then decide what the recommendation, if you want to, we just group decide what the increase in cost would be and so forth like that.
Are you saying given the six-month probation, rotation, so that it's a?
No, just basically renew it through the end of the year, which is normally, it's usually through December thirty-first, I think, is what it says.
So we change the dates.
And then basically, we change the dates from, you know, basically from January first of this year through December thirty-first, and by October of next year, have a lease ready to go, so they don't have to work, then we're not time constrained again.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And what was your comment about, you said something about fire, there was a concern, was it in the insurance policy?
Not so much about that in particular, but just the limits. If you look at, let me pull up that, I'm working with the older lease, but it's the same provision. It hasn't changed.
Under the insurance?
So that would be, that would be paragraph twelve.
Yeah.
And there is the general indemnity insurance and, and the dollar limits.
Right.
Just looking at those, you know, are those still appropriate to the situation? Everything else is dependent on something else.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think it would be twelve C was my question. Because I didn't know how, you know, I, I looked, this was a, a lease from two thousand and twenty-one. Don't know if, you know, this is still going back years and we're still using those same insurance limits.
We did spend some time on that issue the last time we negotiated it. So I, I'm not sure if we updated or not, or after reviewing it, we felt that that was still adequate. But it wouldn't hurt to revisit it, certainly, to make sure it's still, you know, adequate limits for the situation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
With regards to the insurance, could I run that by our insurance rep? Because I know when it comes to like individuals like, with, with the insurance, you know, our insurance companies pretty specific on like coverage for certain things, and I know they require threshold, you know, limits of, you know, a million dollars. So do you want me to run this by our rep to see if?
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, to just make sure we're covered, make sure our, the thresholds we're asking.
There's no gap. That'd be great.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the direction I was going, because, for example, it's one million dollars for injuries to,
or death of one person, two million for injuries or death of more than one person, et cetera, so.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll reach out to Mallory, our representative, because I'm thinking it should be a million and three million. That's the number I always had in my head. One million for personal, and then three million liability.
It would be a negligible amount of money, even premium money too. So, okay.
So we don't have a gap in our, and I don't know if we have an umbrella or anything, but we want to make sure we, there's no gap in the coverage. So that'd be great. Thank you for that suggestion. That's, that's good.
Okay, so we'll bring this back on for an action for next meeting with just a couple of adjustments, or maybe a couple of adjustments and go from there. So, and then work for something more longer term in the fall.
And then who, who's going to reach out to them?
If you'd like to, I'll give.
Give me their information, and I'll reach out. Okay.
Give Mike's information, and you can talk to him. So I think that'll make it good. Okay, that's that. Moving on. One of the things that, here again, this year, we have a budget challenge, and I've had a couple of departments that are promising huge amounts of revenue. It's all right, laughing a little bit, Eric. But here again, the fire marshal the other night mentioned what he'd like to do moving forward with fire for permit inspection fees, and, you know, basically, all the supporting documentation is here. He did some really good research on it. But Bill had planned a trip to Salt Lake City a long time ago, so he's not here. But Eric Quinn, is that a former student, Roseanne?
No, actually.
No, okay. Oh.
No, he's just a frequent visitor to my house in the last couple of years.
Okay, oh, yeah. Okay, Eric, if you'd like to come up and make the presentation, you know, and here again, this isn't for action tonight. This is, I thought the best thing to do is, we can discuss these and then come back and act on them once we've had time to, you know, digest it, and if we can think of any more questions or whatnot. Eric?
Hi, Eric Quinn, Deputy Fire Marshal here for Bill. He's drafted up a proposal that's pretty similar to surrounding towns in the region. The estimated income is, they say, is seventy-five thousand, based on what we have now. That doesn't include all these buildings that people may want to do in the future, that we can't really predict.
That's right. The permits won't include town buildings either, obviously, if it now comes up.
But this, this goes for, you know, we do a bunch of inspections that are statutorily required. So this would allow us to charge for some of those inspections, based on the size of the building, what it's being used for. It also lets us charge for the stuff that we have to come out for, that's like extra, when people want to put up tents, or they want to do big parties or fireworks, you know, outside of the town stuff that they want to do. That causes the town to accrue overtime. It allows us to basically bill for those hours and offset the cost for everything.
Okay, any questions for Eric on the document that we've all had in here? Again, this is just for discussion tonight. I thought it was, when Bill brought this to me, he said, one of the big things, reasons he said is because, you know, basically, this would allow us, as you mentioned the other night, to move the part-time deputy fire marshal up to full-time and have a financial resource to pay for it as well, a revenue source to pay for it. And he also, I think, was very clear that there are buildings that statutory haven't been inspected, which does, you hate to use the word, but makes the town liable if something goes wrong in that, in addition to the property owner. Dan, I'm sure you would know that for a fact, you know, and same thing with your legal backgrounds and so forth. So I think this is a good, comprehensive, and there was a lot of work going done into making sure, what do other towns do? Waterford, I talked to Rob Rule, same thing, they're getting ready to do this too, because, you know, it's just, and, and there's a sliding scale and so forth like that, so it shows what's needed and so forth. Any questions for Eric, or anything?
Just trying to get a handle on the pluses and minuses of going in this direction. I mean, clearly some towns are, you know, taking this, you know, this approach. So tell me what you think, the, other than the, well, pluses, we know it's, it's financial. Is there, is there another plus not financial here that I'm missing?
It helps ensure compliance a little bit, because we'll go out there for the first inspection. We'll say, okay, here's a few things you got to fix, you know, and we'll go out there for a reinspection. And we're like, all right, well, the first reinspection, you know, doesn't, doesn't cost anything on top of your inspection. But if we're going out there a third or fourth or fifth time, it's going to accrue an extra expenditure on them. So they're like, no, we want to get it fixed, we want to be compliant, and it helps prevent us from having to do all those legal fees to bring it to court to get stuff fixed. Basically, it makes them do it quicker, which we like, but it gets everything compliant sooner than later.
And minuses, I mean, you know, I'm not a big fan of, you know, overregulation and onerous, you know, fees. No one is, I think. But tell me what you think the minuses are, if any, from your perspective.
You know, from my perspective, I don't have any minuses, but I, I don't own a business here in town. So I can see where they might be a little unhappy, but these aren't huge numbers. You know, we're not looking to make them on pop shop pay hundreds of dollars to do this. The fee is very minimal. We're not high as other towns. We're not as low as some of the other smaller towns. We really tried to make sure that we were in the middle and average.
Okay.
So that, you know, if other people are looking to come to town, they, they don't see our fees as crazy.
One of the things I did with, Dave will talk, the building official will talk to this too. We've talked to some of the contractors and some property owners, and they understand this, and they don't find this is, they say, they, they want this certificate, they want this review to say, yep, see, it's done. I know I'm required to do this, and so forth like that. And, you know, and one of them that Dave and I were talking to, they said, you know, they fully under expect this, because, you know, we haven't raised our building rate since two thousand and sixteen. Everybody, we're rock bottom in that area, at the absolute lowest. And the effort is to put us, you know, bring us a little above the lowest, but not at the high end at all. So, and here again, it allows us to have the resources to do, these are statutory requirements. Right now, we, you know, really don't have a choice but to do them.
I mean, as, as the fire marshal wrote in his memo, the state is mandated, but like, like many other mandates, it's not funded. And so, you know, it falls on us to do all the work. Okay.
I wonder if section five C, where it waves fees for towns and board of, for the town buildings and board of ed, couldn't include five oh one Cs?
Where are you going? Sorry.
Section five, the right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the. And that's why this is up for review. I mean, if we could, we could ask to make that adjustment for five oh one C, not to, like, well, care and share wouldn't be, anyway, it's a town building, so that would be there. But that's a good point. I, I think we could possibly, Eric, you'll just take that, yeah.
Yeah.
Remove five oh one Cs. Because I don't, that wouldn't be a big, you're not talking about a large group of people. But here again, here again, you look at, you know, the, the blue door, they're looking for a storefront if they get one you have an inspection. And as she pointed out, nobody in their organization gets a paycheck, so, yeah.
Typically, the five oh one Cs are looking for dollars, not hundreds of dollars.
Yeah. Okay.
But these fees do seem a lot smaller than I expected them to be.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be painful for anybody.
Yeah, Bill did, Bill did a lot of research in doing such, as Dave did with his, so. Other, Dan, you have a question?
No, I just, you know, the, the emphasis is more and more on, on fire safety and prevention, and even in the real estate world, you know, we, this year we have a new affidavit that you have to fill out on smoke detectors, smoke alarms, and it's a little more onerous than the affidavit in the past, that, you know, when you're transferring real estate. And I think, you know, enhancing the ability to do these inspections is consistent with, with, with that thinking. And, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. And I, I don't think, you know, commercial property owners, I don't think they should really object to it. And it forces them to be sure that the systems they have, it's great to have someone inspecting it, making sure the things are up to date. And it could serve you very well in the event of a disaster. And if you've done everything you're supposed to do, you know, you're going to be in much better shape if you get sued. So I don't think we should object to it, and I think it's a good thing.
And one thing too is, you know, here again, too, you're, you know, if you bring up the fire, the deputy to a full-time position and don't charge these, everybody has to pay, and this way, only the people utilizing the service will be, you know, charged for it. And, you know, it's not something you have to do quarterly or something like that. It's a known expense, especially if you have a business. Any other comments? Thank you, Eric. Now, coming up is Dave Garside. He's our new building official. And they've, very similar, you know, men came up and said, our, we haven't raised our fees in an extremely long period of time. And not only did he do the research to see where we are, he's been engaging contractors to see what their feeling was about this. And they, they understand it's the price of, you know, doing business and so forth like that. And Dave, why don't you take it from there?
Yeah, so I was actually kind of surprised to see that these were that dated, seven-year period, especially with the code changes and the requirements of the code. It's, it's a long time ago unchecked. As you can see, like in the previous ones, construction was at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. New homes, custom homes, something akin to three hundred dollars a square foot. We're looking to increase to two twenty-five to make it less painful, but at least try to get a fair share of what's going on in the marketplace. So some of the fee structures that we had, I highlighted in yellow, if you have them in front of you, we're trying to propose some additional evaluations, first off, so that we can assure that we're getting our, our piece of the pie when it comes to getting the permit fee structured correctly. When I did the analysis, I took a ten thousand dollar permit fee. Ten thousand dollars, we were a hundred dollars for the permit fee. London was a hundred and eighty dollars. Groton was a hundred and sixty dollars. I think Old Lime was a hundred and. So we're like on the, we were on the bottom. We haven't done this in a long period of time. And other municipalities have been doing it, and do it on a regular basis, I think, just to get a feel, minimum about a three-year period. You should not let it go by, so, because that's what happens. We're, we're about seven years, and we can't make the jump to the current cost, but we should at least try to get up towards, you know. And this could generate about forty to fifty percent revenue increase from where we are now. Because with the evaluation and the proposed increase in the fee schedule, which is three dollars a thousand, doesn't sound like a lot, but it can generate some income.
And, you know, and one of the things too is, you know, the revenue for this, you know, this is, you know, you'd love to say, but, you know, downstairs, we're looking at moving into trying to digitize and get rid of those rows and rows of file cabinets. If we're generating some revenue to help support that, it's something we don't have to take out of some, you know, out of bond for, or looking at in a capital expense, or even a budgetary thing. So I appreciate Dave bringing this forward to us. Any questions for him?
I think, I think the fees are very reasonable compared to, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of nice homes going up in town. And we've also got this potential influx of more multi-family housing.
Right.
Coming up. And I think, let's face it, it costs money to run a town.
Yes, it does.
So I think, I think I agree, we're overdue.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Dave? If anybody, going through this over the next couple of weeks, because I plan to have this for action at the next meeting, but if you see something on there that you want to, a little more, just reach out to Dave directly, or if it's changing things or something like that, just let me know too, so. But Dave, thank you.
Thank you for doing this, because it was in the works previously, but it never was completed. So very frustrating, so, but thank you so much.
Yeah, because like I said, when I looked at the valuation table, I went, oh, boy, this is really behind the curve at this point. You know, and we're not even talking COVID prices, we're talking just standard construction costs. And because of the code impacts now, the cost of construction, it used to be a service to replace the two hundred amp service was like two thousand. It's like five thousand dollars now. So, you know, the prices of construction are going up, and, you know, we're just sitting back, and we're not generating the revenue, like Kevin says. Digitize the system, get software that actually works. We can go online now, online permitting. You know, there's, there's a lot of costs that we see coming our way, and if we can offset those costs by adjusting the fee schedule, it makes sense.
That's great.
Thank you, Dave.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, that, we've been here a long time, even though it's only seven-thirty. Exchequer reports. Bill, anything?
No, I went to planning last night, and it was pretty, nothing, nothing to report.
Okay, Anne?
No, nothing this evening.
Okay, Dan?
I was perched to rec, but we had quite a thorough discussion.
Yeah, I think we know what's going on.
We covered that pretty well.
Roseanne?
We handled commission on aging. I'm set.
So that's good too. Just, I'll just make my real brief. I, we had a council government meeting tonight, tonight, yeah, because I'm, today, this morning, the TVCC, basically, there's more and more requests for assistance with fuel, utilities, which would be water and sewer, food supplies and so forth like that. So it is increasing. So there's more and more people having needs, and fortunately, more funds have been made available for that as well. Another subject, basically, April, it looks like, and I'm going to a meeting in a couple of weeks, it might be Zooming, I'm not sure yet, but there, April is the startup of the Route one sixty-one, exit seventy-four project. It's going to last about four years. There'll be some times when there'll be very minimal, you know, impact on the town when they're working, you know, off the road, you know, starting with where the exit ramps are going to command, the access roads and so forth. But there'll be times when there'll be serious diversions and, you know, detours and so forth like that, especially when they get to the point where they replace the bridges. It's going to be, it's going to be overnight, but they'll be very limited. You'll have to get off ninety-five. If you're, if you're coming southbound on ninety-five, you'll get off at exit seventy-five and get back on at exit seventy-four, because you'll have bypassed a bridge. On one sixty-one, when you're doing that, you'll have to, if you're going down one sixty-one, you're going to have to get on ninety-five, go up to exit seventy-three, get off, come back down ninety-five and get off, just on the other side of the bridge. There'll be a lot of traffic, and someone said, it won't be so much. I know the town, I'll know where to go. So does everybody else in town, so it'll be busy. But I'll have a lot more information after that. On, on some good stuff, this past Saturday, they had at the Winter Farmers Market, they had the Super Bowl, S-O-U-P-E-R, six. the Winter Farmer's Market, they had the Super Bowl, S-O-U-P-E-R. Six restaurants in town participated. Gourmet Galley won with a sherry mushroom biscuit. It was really good. Who else? Five churches, Seven Napkins, Lilian's, La Llirona, and Lil, they said Lilian's, but there were six in there. All of them were just really good. And.
You sampled all of them?
Oh, yeah. $5 was the cost for a spoon. And, and you got a, you got a cup. And the longer you were there, the more times you would go through. But, you know, the, it was a fundraiser for, for the $5. That went to Care and Share. So Care and Share got over 700, got $775 from that, for people buying the, sampling the soups. And they also had a jug there for people to put donations on. Somebody put a $500 check in the, in the thing. So they made about $1,700. And it's just a great community event, because a lot of people from the community there. It was, it was a good time. So, anyway, so I think, I'll just leave it at that. Trying to think of anything else going on. Nothing that we won't report for the next meeting. So I think that'll do it. Public comment, anybody? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to enter.
Sure. Move to enter into executive session. The purpose of discussing real estate matters. Eastline Land Trust, Asagachi Hills, Hathaway Farms property. The board is entering into executive session at 7:41 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, same favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're in executive session. We'll take a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session here.
I'm going to do my camera here.
Okay.
Rear.
There we are.
And there we are. Okay.
Okay, we're out. We, I'll go ahead.
Yes, we've, we've, Board of Selectmen have returned from executive session at 8:40 PM, and no formal votes were taken. And move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.